Good morning, everybody.
That's gotta be a big part of it, right?
Good morning. Before we begin, I want to make sure that if anybody cannot hear us as we're speaking because of the microphones, if you could just let us know, it's not impolite. We want to make sure that you hear our voices. So sometimes, sometimes it's a problem. Always a reminder for that.
What's going on over there?
Oh, you can, it falls off the wall.
Um, are we all ready? Welcome, everybody, to a special county board meeting. It is Monday, November seventeenth. It is nine forty-seven. Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Allen. Arroyo. Bates. Doherty.
Garcia.
Garcia here.
Grape. Gums.
Here.
Ig Paul.
Ig Paul, yes.
Tubby. Kias.
It's present.
Leonard.
Leonard here.
Louis.
Louis here.
Molina.
Pennsis.
Pennsis here.
Roth.
Roth here.
Sanchez.
Sanchez present.
Strathman.
Present.
Sergeus.
Sergeus requesting remote.
Tarver.
Tarver's here.
Tepe. Williams.
Williams remote for a little while.
Young.
Here.
Hiron.
I'm here as well.
Miss Allen has just walked in.
Good morning, Deb. Alrighty. May I have the, your permission to allow Ms., Mrs. Garcia, Mr. Williams, and Sergeus and Sergeus to come in remotely? Thank you, thank you. And Mr. Sergeus, please check your email. We've just sent you something I'd like you to read. Because you're the Chair of Human Services.
Okay, thank you.
From Jamie. You'll see it. Everyone's getting a copy of it. So thanks for that. Nothing, nothing. Support for the IMRF person.
Got it.
Alrighty, um.
Miss Allen, you were the last one in. You get to do the clutch.
My allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation. It is about liberty and justice for all.
Did I give you enough time? And, and Ms. Allen, Mrs. Allen, would you feel comfortable to give a little bit of words of wisdom for invocation? Putting you on the spot.
What a charming thing. What a, what a charming request. I think we are always seeking wisdom and generosity. Our concern is for our constituents and our families. Our constituents are simply extensions of our families. And we hope that as we do this decision-making, that we keep them foremost in mind. I think it's important that government be generous rather than mean spirited. And not everyone will agree with that, but I would rather those of us who are sitting here are thinking of our friends and neighbors with kindness and courtesy. And may we please use best practices and all the intelligence we could summon. Thank you all for participating. We are grateful to be here. We are grateful to be part of a world community. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Very, very nice indeed. All right. May I have a motion to second to approve the minutes of October twenty-second?
Time to chair?
Yes, sir.
Kias, I would ask for unanimous consent for the minutes of October twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five.
Okay, do we have unanimous consent? Yes. Okay, very good. Minutes are approved.
Yeah, totally agree.
We have a number of speakers today. Please, I appreciate everybody taking time out to speak. So the first speaker is Denise Keel. Welcome, Denise. Now you'll have three minutes, and please introduce yourself and give the city where you live.
Oh.
No. Is the microphone on?
It should be a button to press.
Okay, can we start over with the minutes, please?
Absolutely. Hold on a second.
Sorry, I'm a teacher. I like things right.
You want to start that over? Okay, you ready? Set, go.
Thank you, and thank you for kind, beautiful words this morning. I've, first time I'm here, and I thank all of you for all, all the things that you do here, here in our county. My name is Denise Keel, Manessas. And I'm here in support of the resolution to prohibit ICE from using Kane County government property. I've lived more than forty years in Aurora. I'm from Chicago. But I speak now for the immigrants, the immigrants of this county and of our country. The violence, the brutal attacks have to stop. We've had enough lawlessness, lawlessness, unconstitutional attacks, heartless, immoral, godless attacks. I am a retired teacher, thirty-three years, East Aurora School District, one thirty-one. A bilingual teacher, Spanish-speaking. My family is from Venezuela. My students were both citizens and non-citizens. Many, hundreds, hundreds. Have over a thousand students. Were DACA students. They were born in another country, but they were brought here as children, mostly Mexican. I have never had a bad student in thirty-three years. Never. Ask yourselves and your family and your friends if another teacher can say that. I have never had a problem with a parent ever. School District, one thirty-one. My heart and my soul. Respect. It's called respect, and I had it, and I have it still. And because this, these, this community is God-fearing, God-loving, law-abiding community. I speak with firsthand knowledge. These past few months, I've been substituting. The children are afraid in the school. I have two daughters that are teachers. We have teachers. Families are afraid to leave their home. Businesses, restaurants, supermarkets, stores have seen dramatic decline. They're empty in Aurora. We are suffering the unlawful abuse of ICE and Border Patrol. Last week in the courts, it was found that the six hundred immigrants were unlawfully kidnapped and now are set to be released. What a disgrace. It's an abuse of power, power, power. There's terror. Only sixteen of those six hundred detained had criminal records. Utter indignation. The tactics like ICE entering a preschool and dragging a teacher out in front of her students. Don't get me started. I want to cry. Terrifying those babies. The footage was frightening. Why are they targeting profiling people of Hispanic heritage? It's, it's a disgrace. I'd like us to resist. I'd like to resist. I'd like you guys to put a little bit of a push on them, and I'd like, you know, even the Pope.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you. Our next speaker is Howard Miller. Mr. Miller, again, your name and the city you reside in, and then you have three minutes.
Howard Miller, Batavia, District Ten. I will refer to ICE, Border Patrol, and Homeland Security agents as MIGRA. That's an immigrant community term for them. Since we don't know who these agents are, they drive around in unmarked vehicles with heavily tinted windows and usually out-of-state plates. In September, I and a few other members of one million rising tri-cities joined with immigrant residents in West Chicago to patrol apartments when children were being dropped off from school to make sure they could get home safely. We were on call to drive around town to spot and/or report any suspicious MIGRA activities to be able to alert residents of their presence and to stay indoors. We passed out "Know Your Rights" cards and informed people of what they're and MIGRA are by law allowed to do. In October, I and other Batavia, Geneva, and St. Charles citizens, some of them are also here with me, joined rapid response teams that are ready to go where MIGRA has been seen gathering to alert people of their presence. We cannot interfere with MIGRA, but we can escort residents to their home or car to ask to see badges and question warrants and video arrests and treatment of detainees. We have witnessed, we have witnessed these operations at the Kane County Judicial Center. We have seen what has been happening in Chicago, Los Angeles, and Charlotte, where MIGRA has abused their power and are arresting innocent citizens and immigrants. These scenes we've seen before in nineteen thirty-three. Please let us not forget that history has a habit of repeating itself. Please vote for Resolution twenty-five forty. We are here and we vote.
Thank you. Speaker is Vilma Gato.
Good morning. My name is Vilma Gato. I live in Batavia, and I'm proud to speak on behalf
Get up a little closer to your microphone. Just pull it up closer to you. There you go.
Good morning. My name is Vilma Gato. I live in Batavia. I'm proud to speak on behalf of Mary Berman, someone I worked alongside for fifteen years. In all that time, Mary proved herself to be one of the hardest-working and most reliable people I've ever known. If Mary said she would get something done, you could consider it handled thoroughly and on time. Her work ethic is unmatched. Mary also understands people. She consistently provided outstanding customer service, treating everyone with respect and patience. She knows how to listen, how to communicate, and how to solve problems the right way. But the quality that stands out most, and the reason I believe she will be an exceptional county board, board member, is Mary's integrity. She does what's right even when no one is watching. In fifteen years, I never once saw her compromise her values. She leads with honesty, fairness, and genuine care for the community. Mary Berman is exactly the kind of steady, principled, hard-working leader our county needs. I'm honored to support her, and I hope you will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ross Powell.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Ross Powell. I'm a emeritus professor of ge sciences. I want to talk to you today about water resources associated with the Grove development in Sugar Grove. I have provided you with full documentation and background materials via email yesterday, but with the three minutes allotted, I have time to demonstrate my concerns by explaining only one of the issues. Crown Community Development, in their recent agreement with Village of Sugar Grove, has just started their excavation of former farmland on the north side of Merrill Road and south of I- eighty-eight as part of the Grove development. The Haniford Woods Nichols Farm Forest Preserve is immediately south of the new development on the south side of Merrill Road. It is my understanding that the Forest Preserve Commission agreed to accept rainwater runoff from the Grove development land onto Haniford Forest Preserve land and under a stormwater pollution prevention plan agreement. During the initial work on Crown's Grove site, a large pond or lake formed in a depression that construction crews has excavated on the north side of Merrill Road that has since been made into a detention pond and overflow water from that now diverted and pumped under Merrill Road and onto forest preserve land. However, the water in the pond lake is not rainwater, although during a rainstorm event, it may be added to, but all of it is groundwater coming from the Kaneville aquifer, according to the Illinois State Geological Survey. My understanding is that the pumping and dumping of groundwater lies outside the agreement between the Forest Preserve and Sugar Grove, which allows for only rainstorm water diversion. Furthermore, as the development expands, there is a high likelihood of even more water diversion because the entire area projected to be developed has only two and a half feet or less of soil above the water table. I have two concerns with the situation. There is a high potential of groundwater contamination at the downstream end of this site in the aquifer that is used for potable water. There is a high potential of significant flooding downstream of the detention pond that will be in the forest preserve land when the groundwater is added to runoff from a major rainstorm event. I have several other issues that I asked the board to consider in my full document regarding the consequences and outcomes of the Grove development on our Kane County community and request that the board take steps to correct the situation in discussions with Sugar Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dan Spelman.
Hi, my name is Dan Spelman from Geneva. I'm here to talk once again about Team Normal and about Resolution twenty-five four fifty. Today, you have a clear choice in front of you. As you know, Resolution twenty-five four fifty, which prohibits the unauthorized use of county property for civil immigration enforcement activities, is up for a vote, and I'm asking for you to support this resolution. Supporting Resolution twenty-five four fifty is Team Normal in action. It respects the rule of law, aligning county practices with Illinois law. It respects due process, so people aren't targeted or intimidated on county property. It respects local control by keeping Kane County facilities from being used for unauthorized enforcement. This isn't about being soft or about being tough. It's about being lawful, consistent, and fair, what responsible government should be. Team Normal is not left or right, but rather it is everyone who is tired of chaos, conspiracy theories, and cruelty being passed off as politics. It's people who still believe in decency and the rule of law and shared facts. Right now, it can seem like the richest and the loudest have the fewest, face the fewest consequences. Meanwhile, the people in Kane County are trying to pay bills, raise kids, and trust that democracy works. We've seen national politics come into our lives. It's about grievance and revenge, and it tells people, don't trust elections, don't trust the press, don't trust the courts, only trust me. Well, that's dangerous, and it's anti-democratic. Team Normal believes something different. Team Normal believes elections settle disagreements, not mobs or veiled threats of violence. Facts matter more than social media outrage, and public office is a service, not a performance for personal gain. Government looks like this, good government. We respect institutions, elections, courts, and peaceful transfer of power. We respect each other. We don't dehumanize neighbors based on origin, language, or political ideology. We choose truth over conspiracy. We don't twist political norms, rules, or laws to our personal benefit. Team Normal asks for honest, accountable government, leaders who tell the truth and follow the law and put the community first. So I'm asking you, as members of the Kane County Board, don't amplify lies about elections or about this resolution. Support Resolution twenty-five four fifty and prioritize policies that actually help the people of Kane County. Most people are members of that, of Team Normal.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Jerah Piper.
Good morning, Chairman, Chairman. I'm Jerah Piper from Sugar Grove. I am a board member on the Kane-Dupage Soil and Water Conservation District, but I do not speak on behalf of them. And I guess I'm here because there's a large problem that people are not recognizing and making adjustments for, and it's our clean water. And right now, we have a huge project called the Crown Development, like Dr. Ross Powell is talking about, and we have excuse me, sorry, I forgot my bifocal, so let me go on to say that when a project of this magnitude rolls through, every official involved must be cleaner than clean. No conflicts, no divided loyalties, no undiscolosed relationships, no back-channel diplomacy, no political favors, period. But that's not what the residents have been witnessing. We've watched elected and appointed officials in Sugar Grove, our, our last president, Jen Conan, and then our trustees, which most of them were voted out, dance around basic disclosures. We've seen TIF deals structured in ways that cripple schools, schools for decades. We've seen an annexation agreement rammed through despite overwhelming public opposition. And now we're left wondering, who is actually representing the taxpayers and who is representing Crown? And yes, that absolutely includes Rick Williams, who is on the Kane County Board. He is not only Crown-funded attorney for Sugar Grove, he is the attorney for the residents of Blackberry Creek who is directly impacted by this development. You have to understand the development that is north of eighty-eight and forty-seven. Once they grade that land, they will deplete every single home well, because they're all on Septic and Well, and I gotta hurry this up. But what that essentially means, and we've done the research, that's thirty thousand dollars start to drill another hundred feet down. I don't know of any resident that has thirty thousand dollars just for the fun of it, waiting to drill more into the land because a billion-dollar Crown wants to put a huge data center that is unnecessary for Sugar Grove and will not be paying taxes on it to all the taxing bodies. But back to Mr. Williams. He is now asking the Kaneville High School, I'm sorry, the Kaneville School Board to not sue Sugar Grove, has gone to the judges and on behalf of Sugar Grove and not sue. He's also now the attorney, even though he's representing BlackBerry Residence. He's now the attorney for Sugar Grove that is against a BlackBerry resident, which is Dale Essling, who's suing the project. So there's just a lot involved. It's just something that everybody needs to take a, you know, a look at. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joyce Heiss. Joyce?
Good morning. My name is Joyce Heiss.
Joyce, could you get a little closer to the mic?
A little closer to the mic. Is that better?
Much better. Thank you.
My name is Joyce Heiss. I am a resident of North Aurora for thirty-five-plus years. It's my privilege to be here this morning to talk to you all about Mary Berman. I've known Mary Berman for most of the time that I've lived in North Aurora. And Mary exemplifies the values, energy, and dedication the constituents of District Two deserve. To know Mary is to experience her grace, her warmth, her sense of humor. There are few, if any, residents in our village that would not call Mary their friend. While Mary was always steadfastly at Dale's side, while out canvassing, Mary demonstrated her exceptional communication and relationship-building skills, engaging people with real dialogue, asking thoughtful questions about their concerns. She wanted to make sure that every voice was being heard, respected, and understood. Never a verbose leader, Mary embraces a quiet, calming leadership approach. But don't let the quiet part deceive you. If Mary has a point to share, she will indeed share it with grace, a trait that has all but disappeared in our society today. Mary exemplifies the qualities of clear and present communication, ability to connect with people on a human level. Collaborative leadership and financial awareness are exactly what the constituents of District Two need in their representative board member. I heartily and respectfully ask for your vote today to appoint Mary Berman as the District Two member of the Kane County Board. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carolyn Anderson.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Anderson.
Carolyn, closer to the mic.
Okay, sorry.
There you go.
Good morning. My name is Carolyn Anderson. I'm a resident in Nottingham Woods, an unincorporated Blackberry Township, whose home depends on the shallow aquifers. Our private wells in Nottingham are typically 50 to 120 feet deep, with static water levels as shallow as 15 to 25 feet. This aquifer is matched by both the ISGS and Kane County as high sensitivity and highly vulnerable to disruption. I am asking that Kane County consider a full groundwater dewandering impact assessment, including aquifer drawdown modeling, nested piezometers, and monitoring wells. Suspension of groundwater discharge until aquifer source, flow rate, and hydrologic impact are independently verified. An inclusion of shallow aquifer modeling as a prerequisite for further grading approvals, and a county-led technical review specifically addressing impacts at unincorporated private wells and recharge zones. Since August, during drought conditions, residents have documented continuous 24/7 pumping and discharging of water from the Grove Development into the Hanaford Bliss Woods Forest Reserve. With no rainfall to generate stormwater, the only hydraulic source for this sustained flow is groundwater. The Sugar Grove Administrator confirmed the trenches are not permanent and that final engineering is still under review. No piezometer data, no seasonal high-water tabel, and no hydrogeologic evaluations have been provided. What Sugar Grove does have is a lasting contractual threat by Crown Development, prohibiting them from doing or saying anything against the development. This pumping is not regulated by the sweep, which applies only to stormwater from precipitation. Sweep does not cover aquifer dewandering, masquerading, dewandering, or perched water removal. Depleting groundwater in this way includes localized drawdown, alters hydraulic gradients, disrupts recharge pathways, and permanently removes water from the shallow aquifer, relied upon by hundreds of unincorporated residents. When I contacted the Illinois EPA, staff was unaware that our neighborhoods even use private wells. They assumed we were on municipal water systems, meaning that the agency had not evaluated the groundwater discharge in the context of private well protections, because they were never informed that these wells existed. Kane County does have statutes that do apply to them, which I will be emailing to you. There's four statutes that do require that the county represent unincorporated residents. It's ILCS 55, and I'll send you individually each one of those. None of these statutes exempt the county simply because the development site was annexed by Sugar Grove, especially when unincorporated private wells are the receptors of harm. Compounding this, the county has confirmed that its current groundwater model is not granular enough to evaluate shallow aquifer impacts here.
Thank you, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Paige Gravitt.
Hi, my name is Paige Gravitt, and I'm a resident of Blackberry Township in Nottingham Woods. I am here with many of my neighbors, talking about the Crown Community Development and the proposed 260-plus acres with use intended for data center. This is more the future problems and issues that we may face. The Great Lakes are 20% of the planet's freshwater. Forty million people rely on this water for drinking water. Data centers are estimated to use 365 million gallons per year. That's what 12,000 American households use in the same time span. Manuka, Illinois is already securing access to Lake Michigan because they anticipate future needs. 187 data centers in Illinois already, and that number is only increasing. Our Great Lakes are at risk, and by allowing this in our community, we are certain to impact our local hydrology. I am on well and septic. I'm here to advocate for my community, my family, myself, and everybody's health and safety. We can anticipate dropped water tables, which means that household members are going to have to pay to deepen their wells, substantial tens of thousands of dollars to do so. In addition to that, there's going to be an influx of sediment, which can ruin our pipes, affect our septic systems. Is that's not bad enough. We have to face the potential chemical contamination, the PFOS, the biocides, the heavy metals, the corrosion inhibitors. The EPA advises that there should be an annual water testing to monitor this. That test is about $1,200 for a comprehensive environmental health scan. So who can afford the $1,200 on tops of the pipe replacements, the septic issues, the well deepening, right? So if we don't monitor it, we can face cancer, immune system defects, developmental and reproductive issues, organ and metabolic effects, which has long-term impacts to our community, generations of cancer and metabolic defects. Data centers are targeting rural areas with cheaper real estate costs. The damage to our pipes, our wells, and the additional costs that we will face will drive people from their homes and contribute to an already existing affordable housing problem. These are not fear-based hypotheticals. This is already impacting thousands of communities across the nation. This project has the potential to catastrophically impact the agricultural industry, citizen health and safety, and the financial well-being of Kane County residents. Crown has a gag order on the Village of Sugar Grove administrations. They're ineffective in protecting area residents. So I am here pleading for your help to protect Blackberry Township residents and our water sources.
Our next speaker is Diane Slosser. Is she here? There she is.
Good morning. My name is Diane Spiehar, and I'm from Blackberry Township. That's okay, Blackberry Township. And I'm reading for Bob Brumande, who is a Willow Creek subdivision resident of Blackberry Township. He lives off of 38 and 47, and he is an engineer in the field for over 50 years, owning his own business. He has done surveying, done landsite law, tons of things about water retention and detention ponds, along with intake structures and discharge. He has personally experienced groundwater at both his properties. He has a property on 47 as well that he rents. And he's had problems with the excavation when they developed the intersection of Main Street and 47. He had issues with groundwater. There's a lot here. The house that he has on 47 was built in 1950, and the groundwater in the front yard is now coming in every time it rains. He can't even mow the lawn there, since that intersection was redeveloped. His house is in Willow Creek. He lives 26, he has a 26-foot drop-off, along with two fourths of all of his residents in Willow Creek, and his landslide's 26 feet. And they have what they call effederal streams, and that's what affects their runoff when it rains. During the Sugar Grove process of approving the final plans of the current housing development, I brought to the attention of the board, this is Bob, the reading of the current topography and maps, water tables, information that many house foundations built in here would be below water table and that the sump pumps would be running continuously. Earlier studies and reports from Hay and Associates, along with documents from Kane DuPage Soil and Water recommend this property is not suitable for this type of development. Current studies from EEI, who worked for both Crown and Sugar Grove, suggested otherwise. By agreeing, future development in the TIF district could cause additional downstream flooding. Trying to plan for the future, drainage and control of rainwater, especially in the rural area, is most, almost impossible due to many mitigating factors, deadfall, trees, vegetation growth, beavers, muskrats, ephemeral streams, without proper continuous maintenance of these contributing areas. Who is responsible for this maintenance? If the CV road-run water path is already with this compound, this potential issues. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have several more speakers. Wilma Van Aragon? Origan, I'm sorry, Origan.
Good morning. My name is Wilma Van Aragon, and I live in Batavia.
Wilma, could you get closer to that mic?
Okay, thank you. My name is Wilma Van Aragon, and I'm a resident of Batavia. I was asked to read this on behalf of Mark Gately. Dear Madam Chair, please consider this letter an official endorsement of Mary Berman for the vacant county board seat. County Board Seat 2, primarily located in North Aurora, is a rapidly growing and diverse area with a host of different issues. I believe Mary Berman is the most qualified candidate for the vacant county board seat. Mary has lived in the district for over 60 years and has witnessed its transformation from a rural area to a thriving suburb. As a North Aurora Village Board Member for over 20 years, I have known Dale and Mary personally, and we have frequently discussed various village issues and concerns. Throughout the time I've known Mary, she has consistently championed what is best for the community, always understanding that while not everyone may be pleased, what is right must prevail. I recognize that appointments can be challenging. However, if we seek someone who will dedicate 100% to the role and comprehend the district's complexities, Mary Berman is the ideal candidate. Additionally, Mary Berman has served as North Aurora's First Lady for many years. I like that. No one seeking the nomination has attended more community events than Mary. I know of no one who has a bad word to say about her. There is no need for on-the-job training. I'm confident Mary has a grasp on the issues and knows she will face the challenges head-on. County Board members, rest assured that Mary is a dedicated listener who avoids grandstanding and has no agenda other than to serve the district with distinction, just as her late husband Dale Berman did. Mary Berman has always approached matters with an open mind and will not let you down. Lastly, selecting Mary, who is not seeking reelection, is the right move on so many levels. Thank you from Mark Gately.
Thank you, thank you very much. Speaker is Denise Theobald.
Good morning. Denise Theobald of Geneva. I am here in strong support of a resolution that prohibits ICE from staging operations on Kane County property, which, by the way, is property paid for by Kane County taxpayers. And we, as a community, have a say on whether we want to indirectly support ICE's assault on our neighbors. Some argue that ICE is simply enforcing the law, but let's look at the facts. Under Operation Midway Blitz, only 2.6% of the 614 people detained have any criminal record. 2.6%. We can all agree that we don't want criminals in our community. However, when people are abducted because of the color of their skin, masked officers appear without identification, warrants, or due process to the individuals sent to inhumane detention centers. This is not law and order. This is fascism. All of this is heartbreaking to the core. But somehow I do have hope, as I see our community coming together and speaking out loudly and demanding action against this. Many surrounding cities and townships have packed town halls like Aurora and Elgin that have passed resolutions and ordinances similar to the one on today's agenda. Our community is stepping up. There have been massive food drives for residents too afraid to go grocery shopping, volunteers escorting children to and from schools, fellow residents out there witnessing, recording, and documenting abductions. In St. Charles alone, there have been 17 abductions and 27 documented incidents since August 13th. More faith leaders are coming together and speaking out, even Pope Leo, to demand that detainees be allowed basic rights, needs, and faith services, which is their constitutional right. Many of these faith leaders getting arrested for demanding these rights. We are a diverse community, but you won't see that diversity in this room. You on the board probably won't even get an email from those affected. Why? Because they're too impacted, they're too afraid to speak on their own behalf. Imagine the fear. Imagine living like this, the sleepless nights, the hiding, worrying, the calculating of every move, the plans that you have to make in case your children are separated from you. The current administration wants you to think that our neighbors are the criminals, when we know who the actual criminals are. So I urge this board, take this small but meaningful action. Vote yes on this resolution. Do whatever you can, whenever you can, and send a message. Refuse to be complicit, because silence is always on the side of the oppressor. And let's recognize that no human being is illegal.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Ken Shepro.
Good morning, Ken Shepro, Kane County local historian. I was going to present another semi-quintcentennial minute, but thinking about what I was going to say, instead, I'm going to quote from George Santayana, the philosopher, who said, "Those who forget history are condemned to repeat it." So since the job of the historian by statute is not only to gather information, but to interpret it, let me offer a few comments about things that possibly would be of interest to this board. The history of immigration in this country is rather a checkered one. In 1856, Millard Fillmore, the former president, ran as a candidate of the American Party. Now, the American Party was against essentially all foreigners and immigration. And if you read your history books, you will see they were known as the know-nothings, because when anybody was to ask them what they were and what their philosophy was, they were supposed to say, "I know nothing." That was in 1856. He did manage to carry the state of Maryland. Over the years, we've had Chinese exclusion laws. We've had laws against the Germans, laws against the Chinese, laws against the Irish. Irish need not apply. In 1940s, we had what I think is possibly the worst decision ever issued by the Supreme Court, although there's lots of competition. Korematsu versus the United States upheld the right of the government to seize American citizens of Japanese descent and evict them from the West Coast and put them in concentration camps. We've managed to survive all of that. It started back in 1798 with the Alien and Sedition Acts. And the Alien Enemies Act is still around today. Much of it was held unconstitutional. So when we think about our past, let's remember what's happening and try not to repeat it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That does conclude our public comment. Once again, thank you to all of our speakers who took time out of your day to come here this morning to express your support or concerns. Much appreciated, much appreciated. It is time now for my comments, and I'm going to ask for your consideration. I have three different things I'd like to share with you. But I'd like to address some of those as we go through each one of the resolutions, so that they can, I don't have to speak at length about three different items separated from the resolution they belong to, and all my comments will be brief, I guarantee you. But the one thing I would like to remind this board is that as per county code, and this, but this has not been our practice, but it is per county code. We review the committee assignments every December, so that's annually. If any of you would like to change chairmanship, if you would like to change your committee assignment, please let me know by the end of the week to see if we can accommodate you. But because the sensitivity of this, instead of having all new committees, as we would do during the next election cycle, when we choose and it becomes, if you want to leave a committee... If you want to leave a committee, see if you have a counterpart on another committee that's willing to exchange with you, so exchange seats. Otherwise, I would find sometimes it may be complex to honor your request. So I will do everything I can to accommodate you, but try to talk to your fellow board members to say, "Oh, I really would like to be on Energy and Environment. Would you like to take my seat on Finance?" or et cetera. So, and if any of the chairs would like to give up your position, it is not my intent to remove any chairs, but if that is your choice, obviously it is your choice and we'll find somebody else who would be willing to take on that seat. So if you, again, by the end of this, by Friday, would appreciate it. So I will have the luxury for about a week and a half to be able to review and confer with other board members if necessary. So, that's the one comment I have. That'll be your homework assignment if you so choose. All right. So with that, I'd like to move on now to our resolutions and ordinances. We have, may I have a motion and a second to discuss ordinance number twenty-five dash four-four-five?
Bates moves.
Thank you, Mr. Linder.
Let me get caught up here. Give me a minute. All right. Are there any comments on this ordinance? This will be the...
Madam Chair, Sergeus.
First reading. Yes, yes, Mr. Sergeus.
I am not well-versed on the first readings, but I don't believe that there's any vote required for this today. It's just a reading. Is that correct?
Mr. Frank is speaking.
I'm getting confirmation, but I believe that's correct.
Okay, so this is the first reading. And it'll go on to the December board meeting.
Thank you.
We'll take a vote.
Yes, confirmed.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Ichbald. Would you like to discuss this?
Yeah, could we discuss it?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I have sent an amendment over to Blair. It's an amendment in Exhibit... If Blair could pull it.
Do you want to explain it? It's going to take Blair a few minutes or at least a minute to pull it back up.
I can explain in a few power. The next page, please. The next page of this resolution.
So you want page two? Under the "Now therefore be it resolved."
Yeah, Exhibit A. The last line. It says, "Subject to..." What it says is that the chairman of the committee, the standing committee, will be in charge of the department heads. And I want to amend it that it should be with the concurrence of the county board and its chairman. That's my red line there.
Okay, so is that a motion to... Would you like to... A motion to change this ordinance, to amend this ordinance?
Since this is reading, I don't know if this is the proper time or is the next time.
Madam Chair, if I may, Sergeus.
Oh, hold on. Let Mr. Frank speak and then Mr. Sergeus.
I would prefer it to be held till the second reading. There is no action really be allowed to be taken on this and making an amendment would be taking an action on it. So let's not... I'd just rather hold off on this. This way you guys can discuss it until the second reading. But yeah, the whole purpose of today is just to bring it up. You can have a discussion, but you can't take any actions on it.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you on that. All right. So you have emailed that out, perhaps we can have that email to the entire board so that everybody has a copy of it if you're planning on doing that again in December.
Sure, I can do that.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Sergeus, yes, sir?
Dr. Ichbald, if you could. At the last, when we brought this up at Exec, there were several people that had voiced some concerns. And as a committee and Ms. Labrillo, we have been working to address those and build those into a draft format that will go hand-in-hand with this. And that should be ready for presentation by the second reading. So if you have, and I'd be happy to send out what we're working on, but it was kind of specific to Jared's requests and some other items, and I'd be happy to share that out to everybody beforehand. You know, we're trying to get this right, but understand that we'll tweak it if we get it wrong, so... I just wanted to offer that up.
Okay, well, that would be appreciated. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Greb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question, I guess, to the state's attorneys. So this is reading number one. Reading number two, where we could do other stuff, will be in the December meeting. If we add something to it in the December meeting, isn't that effectively reading number one of it in that version?
No. It's just providing notice to the public that this may be happening and so amendments and stuff that are always allowed for purposes of OMA, it just requires anytime you change your rule, you give the people two opportunities to be aware that you may be changing this rule in this general way.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Give me just a minute, please. All right. All right. So this is the first reading. Do we just pass this on, Mr. Frank?
There's nothing to be done.
All right. So this is fully noted. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on this first reading? Okay, so it is duly noted and we will wait until December to further discuss this ordinance.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to thank Mr. Sergeus, the human resources for working on this. I think it's a good idea and we're headed in the right direction.
Okay, very good. Thank you. All right. Now, may I have a resolution to discuss, potentially pass, item number twenty-five dash four-four-nine?
Gums will move.
Thank you. Second, please.
By a second.
Thank you, Mr. Kias. All righty. If I may, take your liberty, please. I'd like to remind the board of what the code is. That we're going to be following as we go through this. This is, for your record, ten ILCS five backslash two-five dash one-one, section two-five dash one-one. So, here we go. Except as otherwise provided in this paragraph, "When a vacancy occurs in any elective office or in a county of less than three million population in the office of clerk of the circuit clerk in a county which is not a helm role unit, the county board or board of county commissioners shall declare that such vacancy exists and notification thereof shall be given to the county central committee or the appropriate county board or board of county commissioners, district committee of each established political party within three days of the occurrence of that vacancy." Mr. Berman died on October second. I needed one day just to get my feet back on the ground and it was sent out on the fourth. So I appreciate you allowing me that one day of mourning before we had to send the letters out. "The vacancy shall be filled within sixty days, sixty days by the date by appointment of the chair of the county board or board of county commissioners with the advice and consent of the county board or board of county commissioners." "The appointee shall be a member of the same political party as the person he succeeds or she succeeds was at the time of the election and shall be otherwise eligible to serve." So it has to be a Democrat because Mr. Berman was a Democrat. "The appointee shall serve the remainder of the unexpired term, the unexpired term. However, if more than twenty-eight months remain in the term, the appointment shall be until the next general election, at which time the vacated office shall be filled by election for the remainder of the term. In the case of a vacancy in a seat of a county board or county commissioners, which has been divided into districts, section two dash three-three-zero-three or two dash four-zero-zero-six-point-five of the county code, the appointee must also be a resident of the county board or county commission district. If a county commissioner ceases to reside in the district that he or she represents, a vacancy in that office exists." So I mean, what I'm saying to all of you, don't move. Stay in your house and enjoy where you are living. So that is the rules that we are following. All of those rules have been obeyed, have been completely followed without question. So I know there has been a question of transparency. I can share with you that, as I mentioned before, approximately on October fourth, the letters were sent out both by special delivery as well as email and regular mail to both the Republican and Democratic Party. There was a newspaper article that was sent out in Kane County Connects as well as in regular newspapers announcing the vacancy, asking for interested applicants. Those applications came in with the deadline on the twenty-seventh of October. Those applicants were reviewed. Conversations were had that week. I believe that I received them late on a Monday afternoon. I promptly called them on Wednesday and spoke to the applicants during that period of time. We also had the opportunity to send it out to the representatives, the Democratic representatives of the townships with their resumes for the review. They gave me comment, which I have talked about previously. We then convened a meeting of the county board and ad hoc committee, which just met recently last week, where comments were once again given and recommendations. So there has been following much more than the county code requires of me to do, but complete transparency has been taking place. So now, I would like to recommend would say very, very thoughtful, deliberate, very conscientious decision on my part. I weighed back and forth for the last three weeks of who I thought would be the best candidate. That weight was very heavily put upon me after our meeting on Thursday. I'd like to thank every one of our candidates who are interested and expressed an interest and desire in having this position. All of them were exceptional. The reason for my decision, though, is the following. "The three individuals who have expressed an interest in being appointed to fill the same vacancy caused by the death of Dale Berman. Of these two are candidates who also seek election to the position, while the third is not seeking election. An ad hoc board committee has interviewed the three individuals and shared their ranking, placing the non-candidate last. Under normal circumstances, I would respect that decision. However, with early voting beginning in less than two months, and that is on February sixth of twenty-twenty-six, there is a concern. If either of the two candidate applicants are appointed to the board seat, they could claim to be the incumbent, which might provide a political advantage. Essentially, the county board could possibly be perceived as endorsing that candidate. This raises, for me, an ethical question about whether the appointment could unfairly benefit one candidate over the others. I believe it is important to avoid creating the impression of favoritism as the upcoming primary is the opportunity for each candidate to earn the support from the voters of District Two. Therefore, I recommend appointing Mary Berman to fill that position until the end of the term. She has a thorough knowledge of District Two, has no interest in running for office, and her appointment would help ensure that the primary remains free and from perceived bias or favoritism. I would also like to sincerely thank all of the individuals who came forward to be interviewed. Running for elected office requires courage, discipline, and a strong commitment to serve your community. And for that, we are truly honored to have you all running." So that is my position and this is the reason why I have submitted to you for your consensus, Mary Berman.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, Gums, I do have a statement to read. I do apologize for the in-and-out, folks.
Did we make a motion for this resolution?
We already did.
We already did.
My brother's heart just stopped again, but he's okay. Anyways, I do have a statement that I wrote out because I think it's important to write this one out. "Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a statement regarding the nomination before us. First, I want to acknowledge all of the individuals who stepped forward for consideration. Every one of them is capable and I genuinely appreciate their interest in serving District Two. This board benefits when qualified people step up. That said, after reviewing the candidates, speaking with members of the community, and assessing the needs of the district, I am in support of the nomination, Mary Berman. Mary is the widow of the late and great, deeply respected Dale Berman, whose passing created this vacancy. Dale's service to this county was exceptional and anyone who worked with him knows the depth and knowledge he carried. But it's most important to remember that Mary was not just his spouse. She spent decades alongside him, actively engaged in public service, community issues, and the work of District Two. She understands the history, the challenges, and the responsibilities that come with this role. That continuity matters. This appointment will only extend through November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Mary is not a candidate in the upcoming primary. That is a crucial and critical point for fairness. Supporting an appointee who is not running for the seat ensures that we do not unintentionally grant that advantage of incumbency to any candidate currently in the race. It levels the playing field for every individual seeking the voter's support and it keeps the election process clean, open, and equitable for the residents of District Two. I also want to be clear about something that is important to me as a board member. I would not consent to any appointment unless I believe that nominee was fully capable of doing the job. I have evaluated Mary's ability to represent the district responsibly, to participate productively in this board, and to uphold the expectations the residents deserve. I am confident that she is prepared, knowledgeable, and able to step into this role immediately with the maturity and steadiness that this moment requires. I understand that this has become a little bit of a contentious issue, but our responsibility is not to politics or personalities, it's to the people of District Two who deserve representation, stability, and fairness. Leaving the seat vacant doesn't serve them. Appointing someone who is not on the ballot avoids the tilting of the electoral landscape. And choosing someone with decades of lived experience in the district's public service is, in my view, the responsible path. For all of those reasons, continuity, fairness, experience, and capability, I will be supporting the chair's nomination of Mary Berman. I encourage my colleagues to consider the full context of the appointment and the value it brings to District Two and to this board. Thank you."
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Very well said, Michelle. I second what you say. Honestly, I've known Mary, I've known the family, I've known Dale for over a decade. There is no one that could be able to carry on the legacy of someone as important as Dale Berman than Mary. She's out there in the community. There is no one that has the pulse of the community more than Mary does, honestly. I've seen her in action. Yeah, she speaks her mind, you know, that's what we need. We need someone that's going to be able to speak her mind. She has her own mind. She will be able to jump in and do this job right off of the bat. Like I said, I've known Dale, I've known Mary for over a decade. I know what she can do and I know that the community is not going to be better represented more so than if Mary Berman was the county board member for this district. What you brought up, Madam Chair, regarding, you know, north thumb on the scale, whatever you want to call it, you know, that's an important consideration here too, but honestly, even if that wasn't a consideration, Mary Berman has my one hundred percent support for this position because I know she'd be able to do the job.
Yes, sir. Mr. Linder.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask that we could go into closed session to discuss these candidates more fully. I understand that Mary Berman is a wonderful person and would do a good job. I've talked to numerous members of the board and there are a lot of people that have differing opinions and different reasons why or who they want nominated. And quite honestly... And quite honestly, I may have misplaced it, but I didn't actually get a copy of the resumes of the other people until yesterday, Mary and the other people wanting to fill the vacancy. And I have a very tough time making a decision to vote when I don't have at least forty eight hours to review it. So I'd like to make a motion to move into closed session to discuss more fully.
Second.
That.
Just take a call, roll call.
We'll do the roll call.
So just so we're clear, it'll be for the selection of a person to fill in public office, if I understand what Mr. Leonard is hoping to do.
That's what he's looking for, but it is by my consensus, sir. And before we take the vote, those resumes were sent out last week. I know that for a fact, because I was there when they were sent out.
Point of murder. There's a motion on the floor.
Yes, I understand that. I understand that. But I just want to have that clarification, Mr. Linder, that they were sent out.
You can clarify in session.
So with that, this is this is a motion to go into closed session and a vote to go into closed session.
May I ask to hear Mr. Frank's comment again? I just didn't catch it.
For purposes of OMA, we just have to make sure we're clear on what the exact exception that is. So you're asking to go into closed session for under exception number three, which is the selection of a person to fill a public office as defined in this act.
Thank you. Thank you. So are we ready to take the vote? This is to go into closed session. Allen?
Allen, no.
Arroyo? Bates?
Bates, yes.
Sia? Ms. Garcia?
Garcia, yes.
Grape?
Grape, yes.
Gums?
No.
Ichbal?
Ichbal, yes.
Ayas?
Ayas, no.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Molina?
S.
Penises?
Penises, no.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus?
Yes.
Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Williams? Young?
Yes.
S's five noes. Okay, we are now going into closed session.
All right, a reminder to those in the room that have joined the Zoom, you must log out of Zoom before we can move forward with the closed session. Those folks online, please accept your invites. Be aware, we are live streaming, and I will let everyone know once we are digitally in closed session. So again, those in the room, please log out of Zoom.
I just, I had some moments to make.
I still have a couple of people in the room that have not logged out of Zoom.
Oh, damn it.
Doesn't you log out?
Linder, I need you to log out of Zoom.
I'm out. I'm out.
What?
Yeah, per se.
Hey, those online, be accepting those invites, please.
But thank you for the reminder. I wasn't paying attention to you.
Yeah, somebody left their coat.
Okay, they did come through on Friday.
Mr. Frank, someone left their coat. We didn't make an announcement to ask people to leave, to take their personal belongings with them. We should have just, yeah.
All right. Hold on a second. Christina, are you ready? Okay, we're back in open session. Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Allen.
Allen, present.
Arroyo. Bates.
Bates here.
Garcia.
Garcia, here. Here.
Gray. Gums.
Gums here.
Ickball. Caius.
Caius, present.
Jubie.
Jubie here.
Leonard.
Leonard.
Lewis.
Lewis here.
Linder.
Linder, present.
Molina.
Molina, present.
Penisys.
Penisys here.
Roth.
Roth is here.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, present.
Strathman.
Present.
Sergeus. Tarver.
Sure.
I'm sorry that Sergeus present.
Williams. Young. Birag.
I'm here as well.
The quorum in the room.
All right, we have a quorum.
And Chair, point of order.
Yes.
We have to allow Ms. Jubie in.
Ms. Jubie, we welcomed her before. Ms. Jubie.
Yes, sir.
Well, we were in closed session.
So, so Ms. Jub- Ms. Jubie is recognized.
Thank you.
Who? Mr. Young, okay. When Mr. Young comes back, we'll certainly let him in as well.
Madam Chair Sanchez?
Yes, Mr. Sanchez.
I'd like to make a motion to table this resolution and would ask for a second.
All right, one second.
Thank you. The motion has been tabled. Thank you very much. With that, let's go on. We need to take a vote. Vote on the tabling of Resolution 25-449.
Allen, no.
Arroyo. Bates.
Bates, no.
Garcia.
Garcia, no.
Grape.
Grape, yes.
Gums.
No.
Jubie.
Jubie, aye.
Caius, yes.
Leonard.
Leonard, yes.
Lewis.
Lewis, no.
Linder.
Linder, yes.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Penisys.
No.
Roth.
Roth, yes.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, yes.
Strathman.
Strathman, yes.
Sergeus.
Sergeus, yes.
Tarver.
Tarver, yes.
Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Passes to table with six noes.
Motion has been tabled. All right, may I have a motion? And a second to go to discuss. Let me take a breath. To discuss item number 25-450.
Tarver moves.
Molina seconds. Thank you.
Chair Gums.
Discussion. Yes, Ms. Gums.
I do believe that the sheriff had wanted to speak about this, but unfortunately he had to leave.
Madam Chair? I'm sorry, what I- Ms. Gums, could you say-
The sheriff had asked to speak about this. Unfortunately, he had to leave due to our session.
Okay, very good. All right, if he comes online, we'll certainly let him in. Yes, yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd first like to take a moment to thank everybody who was able to be here to speak on behalf of this resolution. I've spent my last month listening to municipalities and public comment in municipalities, so I am familiar with very many of you because I've been listening in, but I don't know any of you personally, so welcome to the county. I'm requesting support for this resolution, which clarifies the authorized use of county-owned parking lots, vacant lots, and garages in accordance with the Illinois Trust Act and the requirements of the Illinois Accountability Commission. This resolution helps to ensure county property is not used for staging areas, processing sites, or operational basis for civil immigration enforcement activities without authorization, while thoroughly respecting the lawful duties of federal officers. Asking for your support because it reflects our shared, I believe it reflects our shared commitment to safety, dignity, and responsible government in King County. This measure simply ensures that county-owned property lots, parking lots, vacant lots, and garages are not used without authorization for civil immigration enforcement activities in accordance with the Illinois Trust Act and the requirements of the Illinois Accountability Commission. Your support of this resolution will help the county continue to manage its property responsibly, operate within the legal requirements, and maintain consistent public-facing policies. I know many, many of us, especially people in my district, have been have been personally affected by what's going on with the immigration enforcement and their aggressive nature. I, you know, I wish I had a magic wand and say that this is going to help. It's probably going to do a fraction of it, which is just allowing us to say that we don't condone what's happened. And we hope that our federal government does better. And we pray for the families that have already been affected, and we're going to do our best to try to protect our communities in whichever way we're able to. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else has any comments on this? Oh, yes ma'am.
I don't have a comment. I have what the sheriff wanted to say because he's in another meeting.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
He said he wanted to come- He said he wanted to compliment the legalese on this of how we've written it, I believe what he means is we're not violating the supremacy clause like some jurisdictions have, and encourage all of the board members to read it carefully so they can answer to their constituents about why it cannot be enforced in a similar way that an ordinance or another law would be able to be enforced. Obviously, I'm here to assist with that in any way.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Sheriff Hank, for those comments, Mr. Grape, I recognize.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, and I really appreciate what our state's attorney just said, because I've heard a number of public speakers saying this will prohibit, this will prohibit, this will prohibit, it won't. So, I'm not in favor of it for other reasons, but I think it's very important that we do what our sheriff just tried to do, and say that people need to understand what this does and doesn't do, because if people think that when we pass this, they can, if they see any kind of federal enforcement officer, which I guess that would include, I had made a list, FBI, DEA, ATF, Home Service, Homeland Security Investigations, ICE, Border Patrol, or CBP, that's the group, that any of those people showing up anywhere on county property would be prohibited, and it, and so I'm gonna take action in my own hands to do it, I want to avoid that, you know, that, that, you know, this does what it does, but it doesn't prohibit, we don't have the right because of the supremacy clause as a county to do this, so it's great, what it's saying, I love the legalese too, but my concern is that people will misunderstand it and take actions that could put our own law enforcement, our sheriff's department in jeopardy, because they're trying to keep people from doing other things. So, just to be clear, what this does and doesn't do.
Yes, Ms. Gums.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I hope my colleagues vote yes on this. What it does and doesn't do, what this says is you can't park your, your vehicle in the parking lot and set up shop. You can't process people on our property and set up shop, doesn't say they're not allowed, doesn't say we can't allow them to do their job legally, and the argument that this may put our local law enforcement at risk, I doubt that, because I'm seeing them at risk every day with the nonsense that's occurring right now. They are out there traveling to events that are ridiculous and protecting people from unidentified human beings. So I would say you can have an argument both ways there. Who's putting them more at risk? Our, our piece of legislation that says, don't come here and set up your shop? Because we're not gonna allow them to do that, or these yahoos running around violating the Constitution? I don't know, I think you should ask a law enforcement officer.
It's all ready, I'll get right back to you, let everybody else have a chance to speak once. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm gonna vote in favor of this. Honestly, it doesn't stop someone from suing, we've seen what's happened out there, there's been some, you know, warrantless, you know, we don't know what the Supreme Court's gonna rule on this, but going over the top a little bit with some of these arrests. And if it happens that we have someone on our property staging, that's not gonna stop someone from, from our state's attorney's office from spending the time to fight a lawsuit because we allowed them to be on our property. We've seen what's happened, you know, you could watch whatever news channel you want, you see what's happening out there. I think we need to protect ourselves, this is one way that we can protect ourselves. So I'm gonna be voting in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bates.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I will be voting yes, I believe this is a common sense ordinance resolution. Anything we can do to help restrict these illegal actions, we must take, there's not much we can do, but this we can, and I'm, I, I think this will be helping our local law enforcement officials and not putting them in danger. I think this is, this will be taking away some of the danger from them.
Very good. All, all done, oh, yes, who's speaking, Mr. Sanchez, or Mr. Kias?
Waving there, behind the monitor.
I see behind the TV here.
You can go first, don't need to take my point.
No, I, I, I just want the public to know, because I have my constituents also, that what this is not do. And when you're out in the public, you still have to be careful, can't break any laws, no DUIs, nothing, but we're just getting some protection, the federal government can protect our people, the state has, so the state can't do it, the county has to. And the public doesn't realize that there's not a free-for-all, you still have to respect the laws while you're here, go to work, drive the speed limit, no DUIs and whatnot, but this is a step in the right direction, I will be supporting it also. And thank you, Ms. Molina, for your work on this.
Mr. Kias.
Look, you can't take my points, man, the, the big point is, thank you, Ms. Molina, for, for doing all of the hard work to, to put this out, I can say that I have been in the last seven years on the board, worked with deputies and the sheriff on a number of things, I've been extremely proud to be able to work with them, identify them as we go around the county, they always are in marked cars with badges and doing the kind of thing that you expect law enforcement to do, what's happening now with the, whatever these guys are, and it's not a matter of hyper, hyperbolic reference here, this is the Chicago Tribune, which is a fairly conservative paper, government's own data providing, in a filing that's posted to the public doc at Friday appeared to show otherwise, and this has been stated already, but just to give it some, you can go to the Tribune and find it, of the sixteen arrests with criminal histories, or about two-point-six percent of the six-hundred-and-fourteen people, five involved domestic battery, two were related to the drunken driving, and one allegedly had unidentified criminal history in our country. One was deemed as a, a national security risk, another had a narcotics condition. There were no, no one, despite having said, the Department of Security said they complained, they claimed they were doing the worst of the worst, none had been convicted of murder or rape or violence. Meanwhile, the other five-hundred-and-ninety-eight people on the list had no criminal history listed at all, yet forty-two of those were still classified as DH, by the DHS, as having a high-risk security. So I am in favor of this, and I think, having seen what it has done to my community up in Carpentersville in my district, I think this is where we speak out, and I'm proud to be part of it.
Thank you, Mr. Kias.
Point of order, can we put that in the record?
Would, yeah, sure, sure, that should.
Mr. Kias, would you, would you like to place that into the record?
Oh, absolutely.
I will second that.
Chicago Tribune, Saturday, November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five.
Would anybody else like to speak to this? Now, yes, Ms.
Yes, first of all, on behalf of the people in District Three Aurora, I'd like to thank Ms. Molina for doing this, it's definitely important in my district also, and also on Section Five, it says that the resolution shall take effect December first, two thousand twenty-six. I believe that should be an error.
That is an error, yes. So if we can have a friendly amendment to make sure it's a scribbler's error, it should be two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you very much, that's it.
All right, so there is an amendment to this, would you like to move that amendment?
Yes, Ms. Lewis would like to make that amendment.
Absolutely.
Arroyo, second Louis amendment.
Okay, so it's to twenty-twenty-five.
Correct.
Do we have consensus on that? Yes, okay, yeah, we don't want to wait until next year. All right, anybody else, yes, Ms. Allen?
Alan here, just briefly, one of our favorite shows for, what, a decade or two was Law and Order? Because that's what we like to think of ourselves, that we move against people with warrants or probable cause, and one of the sad things here is that we're not seeing law and order, and that's what we pride ourselves on.
Thank you. Peter?
Just recounting some personal feelings on this, I have a family that I'm pretty close to, I see the mother and the three-year-old every day. And they're here, they had refugee visas when they came here, they have a permit to work pending a green card, and I wonder whether I'll ever see them again, every time they have to go to the immigration office for another meeting on their green card, because these are some of the people that the guy who, who is leading this charge thinks should be removed, because they have not yet achieved full status, and though they're here legally, and, you know, sometimes he wants to remove the people who are birthright citizens, I, I'm scared, but this whole thing is frightening to everybody, and I think anything we can do to push back, even, even the verbiage, but certainly the actions are important, because we, we can't continue to live like this.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grape.
Thank you, ma'am, I, I just wanted to thank Mr. Arroyo for what he said, that just do what you can to obey the laws, don't, don't, you know, try and hurt any police officer, doesn't matter which agency they're from. I remember in a recent committee meeting, our own sheriff said that he was at a demonstration of people against this, which I totally get, and people started accosting him. And so it's like, you got the right to protest, you do not have the right to obstruct or attack, or some people have been shot at. So it's a bad situation, but just the more we can promote calm, promote organized in, information, so Alex, thank you for, for promoting that, thank you.
Okay, very good, yes, I just, Mr. Young, I see your hand up, I'll recognize you in just a few minutes, yes, sir.
Thank you, just to be brief, and I appreciate the comments from my colleague, Mr. Grape and Mr. Arroyo, it's not a crime to be a person of color, so thank you.
Young?
Yes, David Young, I just zoomed in, we are talking about twenty-five, four-fifty, right?
We are twenty-five, four-fifty, that's correct.
Okay, so I just zoomed in, sorry, I had to leave, the I did talk about the the statutes that are already on the books right now, and I'm gonna go through that again, first of all, Title Eight, Section USC eleven-oh-one, A-three states the term alien means any person not a citizen or national of the United States. Okay, so when we're going through this, we want to talk about aliens, and there's, there's two types of aliens, there's, there's aliens with legal status, and there's aliens with illegal status. So as you talk about this resolution, in the the last statement, it says county-owned property, including parking lots, vacant lots, or garages shall not be used as staging areas, processing sites, or operational basis for civil immigration enforcement. Civil immigration enforcement is the key, the key three words here. What, what does that mean, and there was a definition in the resolution, but in the end, the, the, basically, there's two types of immigration enforcement, there's a civil immigration enforcement that uses ICE, and it's usually a civil immigration law usually means someone that's overstated a visa, okay? Criminal immigration enforcement is involving a, an alien that commits a crime, whether that be theft or whatever, driving under the influence. And in criminal immigration enforcement, law gets involved, DOJ, FBI, potentially. So this resolution covers, provides civil immigration enforcement, is what it says on the resolution. So does this mean that we would allow ICE to use county-owned property for criminal immigration enforcement? So in other words, if, if, if we have these ICE agents, which are just doing their job, and they're, they pull up in their SUV, and someone talks to them, are, they could simply just say, no, we're doing a criminal immigration enforcement, so when you look at the how, how this is written, that they, they usually just be on our county property and say that they're enforcing criminal immigration enforcement. So but when you look at civil and criminal immigration enforcement, Title Eight of the US Code has several sections, whether it's criminal or civil, that allow for immediate removal, and if you look at Title Eight, Section twelve-twenty-seven, A-one-B, it says that any alien present in the United States is in violation, in, in the United States, in violation of immigration law, like remaining after the expiration of a visa, they are deportable, they can be deported. So I, I don't I'd want to make sure everybody understands this, I don't know if anyone actually took the time to read what Title Eight is of the US Code, and then also you look at this who's gonna enforce this, are we gonna have a King County sheriff come and arrest ICE? How is this even enforceable, I don't, I don't think that we should, I think we should be saying no to this, because it's not an enforceable resolution, who is gonna enforce it, and what's the penalty? What, what, what is the penalty if they do come on our property, on the King County property, the King County property is there as a safe haven too, by the way, for these ICE agents, so when these ICE agents are out apprehending criminals that could potentially be criminals, or, or they're definitely criminals because they are breaking immigration laws, then they should have a safe place to go, like, for example, the, the sheriff's parking lot would be a great place for the, they, for them to assemble. So obviously, I'm gonna be voting no against this, and I want to, I'll speak more about this here, I'm gonna keep on going. But there's another part of the resolution where it says, whereas nothing in this resolution is intended, nor shall be construed to impede, obstruct, or interfere with the lawful duties of authorized federal officers. Yes, you are, this, this is impeding by allowing them to use our like, for example, I just mentioned, by not allowing them to use King County parking lots to to assemble and to discuss what they need to, need to do, and the other, other whereas says, whereas the King County Board affirms that all people, regardless of immigration status, are entitled to dignity, due process, and equal protection under the United States Constitution. Okay, where, where is this in the United States Constitution, where they talk about immigration and immigrate, and people, the immigrants are protected under the US Constitution? First of all, not, not one time is the word immigration or immigrant used in the US Constitution, so this statement is false. Eight USC says that illegal aliens are deported immediately, now notice I use the term illegal aliens, non-citizens that are here illegally, right? So technically, under this, this whereas, technically, they do get due process under federal law. And when you look at due process, look at eight USC, eight USC says that they will be investigated and deported, so that is their due process. So what, what, what we're attempting to do here is overwrite federal law, when you look at federal law, we are attempting to overwrite this, now, something that I said last Monday, I'll say it again, is the supremacy clause. The supremacy clause says that the United States, oh, I'm sorry, the supremacy clause says this, the US, this constitution and the laws of the United States shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made or which shall be made under the authority of the United States shall be supreme law of the land, and the judges of every state shall be bound thereby, anything in the Constitution or laws Anything in the Constitution or laws of any state to the contrary, notwithstanding. So basically, it says the US Constitution and the federal laws, they take precedent over state laws. And now here, we're going to be implementing this this resolution, which is essentially overriding federal law, which we don't, we do not have the authority to do. And and the people that the people that it's one more thing, the people that we're going after, that they're going after is the illegal aliens. Okay, we're not going after the legal aliens here on a green card. ICE isn't going
Point of personal privilege, Mr. Yes, Mr. Yes, thank you, Mr. Young, you have spoken over five minutes.
Point of personal privilege, there's
Ten minutes.
No human is illegal.
Ten, ten. Per the rules, Robert's Rule of Order, each person has the ability to ten minutes on each topic. And how long and you've said I've been speaking for five minutes. So I can continue to speak on this topic for another five minutes. And for the person that just interrupted me, there is no person, no, there is no personal preference. What are you talking about?
I said, point of personal privilege, your comments.
There is no, there is no, there is none, there is none.
Mister Young, please, please do not argue.
No, you don't argue with me. I I have the I have the floor. You are not to interrupt me when I'm talking, even if you disagree with me. If you disagree with me, then then go ahead and talk and 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 disagree with me after I'm done speaking, which I'm done speaking now, and that was rude.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Young. Are you done or are you going to, you have more?
I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, I would like to call the roll, please.
No, before before that, hold on a second. Our state's attorney would like to make a comment.
So just answering the questions that were asked, because I don't make comments for as like a board member.
Answering the questions, yes.
So the difference between discussing civil immigration enforcement and criminal immigration enforcement, civil immigration enforcement, as Mr. Young stated, is when somebody is here, but they may have overstayed what they were allowed to do so. So that's civil immigration enforcement and could be subjected to fines or deportation. Criminal enforcement involves offenses like illegal entry or reentry after removal, which could lead to criminal charges, which oftentimes then has a criminal judicial warrant that's attached to it. And so what I want to talk about is what this does. So to the sheriff's point and to the other board members' points about what this does and does not do, what it stops the federal government from doing is commandeering our property because they cannot commandeer that property. Frankly, frankly, nobody can commandeer our property without our permission to do so. So we are just restricting behavior in the way that we legally can because it is our state and county funded property that we're doing so. What this means is that they still can do civil immigration enforcement and criminal immigration enforcement, but they cannot use our property to set up, to make an operations base, to do things like that. So if they were attempting to do that, they can be told to be removed from the property. Now, the question is enforcement. What does that enforcement look like? It's not going to be the sheriff's office who's being called out there telling them to leave. It is going to be reports of this being made, and then it's going to be reported by this board to the accountability board that's been created by state law now. That is something that was set up in response to all of this, understanding that there is the supremacy clause. But that supremacy clause works both ways. The federal government cannot tell us what to do, much in the same way that we cannot tell the federal government what to do. On top of all that, the sheriff's office cannot allow ICE to come into their building and use their facilities because of the Trust Act that was created in the state of Illinois. The state of Illinois prohibits local law enforcement from being able to provide any assistance in terms of civil immigration enforcement. Now, there is an exception when there is a criminal judicial warrant that they could provide some assistance with that. But that's the difference when you have a court action versus something that is civil immigration enforcement, which is kind of akin to probable cause, if you think about it on a local level, for what our police officers do. Lastly, we have to take all of this into consideration with the newly passed House Bill thirteen twenty one. That does restrict civil immigration enforcement to happen within a thousand feet of certain areas like courthouses. My courthouse would be included in that, the sheriff's office is within a thousand feet. So that would even be more prohibition for enforcing civil immigration enforcement when people are going to or coming from a legal proceeding. And so the last thing I just want to say is what this does does not impede the federal government from doing what they're legally entitled to do under federal immigration laws. It just makes sure that they don't commandeer our property because they have no authority to do so.
Thank you for that clarity.
Call the roll, please.
If I may, give me one second. I'd like to thank Myrna, Belina, for her efforts on this. I'd like to thank our state's attorney's office for the review of this. I'd like to thank Mr. Ichbal for going over the final draft with me, making amended changes. I would like to thank our Jane Talish, who stayed late to make sure that this was given to all of you in a timely manner. Because she she uploaded this after the final edit was made, and we'd final edits were being made very quickly because we had to make sure we got it done. So there are a lot of parts moving forward and making sure that this was presented. I also would like to thank our community members who have sent out advocacy, support via email, via Facebook posts, via questions. And I would like to congratulate King County for moving forward on this to make sure that I personally would like to recognize the fact that we are a diverse community. It would makes us strong. Over thirty percent of our community is representative of diversity, and it makes King County a wonderful place to live because of that, in my opinion. So with that, please.
I would like to call the roll.
Thank you. The question's called?
It was called.
Yeah, let's call the roll. Alan.
Alan, I.
Royal.
Oh, yes.
Bates.
Yes.
Garcia. Mr. Grape.
I know.
Gums.
Gums, yes.
Jubey.
Q B I.
I'm sorry?
Q B I.
Kias.
Yes, yes.
Leonard.
He's gone.
Lewis.
Yes.
Linder.
Yes.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Penises.
Penises, yes.
Roth.
Roth, no.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, yes.
Strathman.
Strathman, yes.
Serge's.
Serge's abstain.
Tarver.
Tarver, yes.
Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Miss Garcia is back. Miss Garcia, what's your vote?
Yes, please. Sorry for that.
Oh, you're good. All right, and Mr. Young.
No.
Okay, passes with three noes, one abstain. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
I had to step off for a moment. I'm allowed to put a personal privilege, make a statement.
Oh, yes, you may make a statement.
I'm sorry to step out of this last vote. Thank you all for supporting Ms. Molina's resolution. But let's be honest in what's going on in this country. They're not targeting people who look like a show stratum or Michelle Gomes or or Karim Pierog. They're not. They're going after a no sabo, like I tease them, so sabo like Sanchez or Ms. Molina or Ms. Garcia. And I don't carry an ID. I mean, that's because I'm a US citizen. And that's all, let's be honest, they're targeting Latinos. They are targeting, they're not targeting Polish, they're not targeting Ukrainians, they're not targeting Russians, they're targeting people who are Hispanic. And that's obvious on the news. You don't see them invading neighborhoods in Pingri Grove or Geneva. They're targeting where people, Latino people live. And I'm glad, I'm very proud of you all that voted for this. And if you didn't vote for it, you had your reasons. I don't agree with them, but you had your reasons of your district, but I thank you all for your vote.
Absolutely, absolutely. Righty, um, yeah, those are very meaningful votes. It's been a very meaningful discussion all all around today. So now, may I have a motion and a second to discuss item number? Item number, Resolution twenty five dash four five one.
An assist will move.
Sanchez, seconds.
Thank you. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Serge's. And Mr. Serge's, because this is coming through Jamie LaBrillo. Could you, you have the document that I've referenced before? And I do, and I concur with with her analysis, just so you know, but please.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I I am in a conference room at a client's and and not free to speak openly. But in this, we have, is Ms. LaBrillo in the room? Can she speak to this?
No, she's not here.
Okay, so we have trustees that we as a board get to nominate every so often. We've done an analysis, and this is who we think offer the best candidates to represent us with the IMRF. And I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, because
I don't think there's any controversy here or anything. I think this, you know, we have an opportunity to have a seat at the table, and we should take it, so.
Oh, I I agree, I agree. That's what Mr. Stefan, Peter Stefan, is has great depth of experience in this. He's been sitting on the board for some time. I don't have the exact number. The opponent is obviously bright and willing, but does not have the depth of experience in managing a substantially large size budget as Mr. Stefan has had. So it's really between the two candidates. You also probably, because if you are a member of IMRF, you've also got an individual one as a member. You can vote for a separate ranking of the candidates. But with this one, this is the recommendation for your consideration. So if you would like to support that.
Question, so I'm looking at the letter. Department of Human Resource Management, so I would assume, but it's not signed. There's no name at the bottom, so is it fair to assume that Jamie?
Yes, it, no, this is, we have documentation for email address, yes.
Yep, okay, all right. And does she make this choice or?
She recommended the choice to the board.
Got it. Thank you.
Did not make the choice. It is up to the the board to approve this.
John, we we discussed this at committee and and asked Ms. LaBrillo to do the research for us.
Thanks, Cliff.
All right, so if there's no other questions, clerk, could you call the? Alan.
Alan, I.
Arroyo.
Oh, yes.
Bates.
Yes.
Garcia.
Garcia, yes.
Grape.
Grape, yes.
Gums.
Yes.
Jubey.
Jubey, I.
Kias.
Kias, yes.
Leonard. Lewis. Linder.
Linder, yes.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Penises.
Penises, yes.
At yes.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, yes.
Strathman.
Yes.
Serge's.
Serge's, yes.
Tarver. Tepe.
Tepe, yes.
Young. Passes. Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. All right. Round to our next one is Resolution two five four two. May I have a motion and a second to discuss?
Roth would make the motion.
Linder, seconds.
All right, I'm going to ask for what I discussed earlier. If I, just a few words on this. I think you'd enjoy a little bit of history. Now, this is my presentation about the Liberty Tree. The American Liberty Tree was a symbolic elm, and there she is. Some of you didn't know what an elm tree looked like, so there's an elm for you, for your viewing. The symbolic elm tree was first planted in Boston in sixteen forty six and used during the American Revolution as a rallying point for colonial protests against British rule. It became a symbol of resistance and liberty where protests, speeches, and displays of patriotism patriotism took place. It was against the Stamp Act, if you remember, near early American history. During the American Revolutionary War, the Sons of Liberty often convened under the nation's original Liberty Tree in Boston to discuss their opposition to British rule in the colonies, particularly the Stamp Act. This historic tree became a beacon of hope to colonists and a symbol of American freedom. In an attempt to stymie the colonists, the British cut down this symbol of resistance in seventeen seventy five. The symbol of a Liberty Tree soon became a rallying cry of hope and freedom. Revolutionaries throughout the thirteen colonies began to designate new Liberty Trees. Currently, there are planned celebrations happening throughout Illinois to honor this historic symbol and its legacy of freedom. Over two hundred and fifty communities in Illinois are participating in events to commemorate the Liberty Tree and its significance in American history. On Wednesday, July eighth, twenty twenty six, at five PM, two five thirty PM, there will be a nationwide reading of the Declaration of Independence. The two fifty American Illinois is encouraging communities and counties throughout Illinois to participate. Going forward, it is my hope that this board will provide his consensus for King County to move forward with this celebration. So we have a resolution. We have members of the Daughters of American Revolution who are here. And what is your thoughts on the acceptance of this tree and the related plaque?
Did we have a motion? I'm sorry.
We have a motion.
Yes, we did.
Madam Chair, gums, if I may, gums. Um, I am going to support this. I think that we should be doing something. I'm not thrilled about the elm tree. I get the whole history. I'm an oak tree kind of person, just FYI.
Fell on your house?
I had an elm tree fall on the car, so that was way years ago. But anyways, that's another whole story. The oak tree fell on the house. Long story short is I will be supporting this. I think it's
Thank you.
going to last for three to four hundred years after.
I hope so. I hope so.
They're beautiful trees.
Yes, yes, sir.
You know,
Chair Serge's.
Mr. Serge's, you're next, please. Mr. Linder's got the the mic.
I grew up on a street in St. Charles that was completely lined on both sides with American elm trees, canopied over the top. We had three in our yard and Dutch elm disease, poof. It didn't need to happen. There probably was a better way to deal with infected trees. But anyway, I'm just curious as to what will be the size of the tree that's planted here? Is it going to be just a little?
Could you ask me, and then we can ask, ask one of the ladies?
I'm just looking that way. I was talking to you. Yeah, what's the size of the tree we're getting?
I believe the tree is approximately three feet. That's that's a matured tree. It's not a three foot tree. How how the question, how?
When planted, Mr. Grape, when planted.
Christine Harmon, Regent of the Elias Kent Kane Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution. Currently, our tree is seventeen inches tall, so it's quite small right now. And we're discussing planting this next year. So it will grow probably a couple feet more.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. It's a sapling. Correct. Little tree is a sapling. Mr. Grape.
Love trees. But to Mr. Linder's point, and my wife doing what she does, landscape designer, is there any way not that giftees can be choosers? That we could get a tree that's more likely to survive for a long, long time, like an oak or a white oak? Is that possible?
I believe that I'm, again, I am not a tree.
Kind of, sir.
Honestly, but but I believe that there are, they have changed because of the elm tree disease, which was ten plus years ago, was some time ago, maybe fifteen.
Fifty.
Fifteen?
Fifty.
No, the Dutch elm disease was
Was the nineteen sixty.
Five zero.
Yeah, five zero in the sixties.
Probably even more than that was when I was a child.
Okay, so
And I'm old.
Eighteen hundred? Oh, no.
They've changed kind of the so it's a little bit more resistant, and this would be a single tree planted, not in a row of trees, one tree.
Okay, Madam Chair.
So the question of the tree. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I just wanted to point out, just with a quick Google, listen, Mr. Grape, I agree with you. I'm an oak tree girl, but an elm can live 300 years.
Okay.
Yes.
I would ask, because I believe, isn't the tree we're growing from the original tree in Boston or something like that?
It's an American elm, which is what they have.
Yeah, and that's part of a Liberty Tree. It's always an elm. When I lived in Wheaton, I had an elm that was as big as that one there in the picture. And then when I moved to St. Charles, they had all ash trees, and 10 years ago, they chopped them all down. But in 2003, I planted an oak that my dad had grown from an acorn, and it was three feet tall. And today, it's 35 feet tall. But the elms will get just as big.
That's wonderful. And just a point of correction, because the 13 colonies had diverse weather. The last, the oldest tree just fell down because of Hurricane Floyd. That was in 1999, which was one heck of a storm. I was there when that was occurring. And that was a tulip tree that was planted at St. John's College University, I forget, in Maryland, and it got knocked down. So that was the last living Liberty Tree planted during the period of time of the American Revolution. So there were diverse trees pending upon the climate. But the tree itself, whether it's an elm, an oak, a tulip, or whatever, is a symbolic effort for American freedom and liberty. So that's the essence of this. So with that, the discussion of the tree, do we have can we take the vote?
Yes, please.
To accept this wonderful gift?
Yes, thank you.
Call the roll.
Allen.
Allen, aye.
Arroyo. Bates.
Yes.
Grape.
It's growing on me, yes.
Gums.
Gums, yes.
Jubey.
Jubey, aye.
Kias.
Kias, yes.
Linder.
Linder, yes.
Molina.
Molina, yes.
Penises.
Penises, yes.
Roth.
Roth, yes.
Sanchez.
Sanchez, yes.
Strathman.
I want to say thank you for nurturing this sapling, and yes.
Sergeus.
Sergeus, yes.
Tepe. Young. Passes.
Excellent.
Madam Chair, Mr. Sergeus.
Mr. Sergeus.
I would just make note that your soliloquy sounded very much like a Ken Sheprow soliloquy.
Why, you know.
And that maybe you two are spending too much time at lunch, so thank you.
Great minds love history. Especially when it's something I feel very passionate about. But thank you. Thank you for that compliment. All right, so that concludes our agenda. Is there, we've had, is there a need for another executive session? None?
Please don't.
Please, Sergeus motions to adjourn.
No, I have. Hold on, hold on a second, sir. Hold on. I have
Almost.
Almost, and I have one very quick thing to read to you as of yet, something you will enjoy.
Yes, new business, or?
I have unfinished business.
Okay, I have a committee update.
Okay, I would like, part of the unfinished business is in relationship to the proclamation or the resolution we passed about immigration. And this is for for your enjoyment. This is a quick poem by Carl Sandburg. It's excerpts from the poem "The People," yes. "The little girl saw her first troop parade and asked, 'What are those?' 'Soldiers.' 'What are soldiers?' 'They are for war. They fight, and each tries to kill as many of the other side as he can.' The girl held still and studied. 'Do you know something?' 'I know something.' 'Oh, yes, what is it that you know?' 'Sometimes they'll give a war, and nobody will come.'" I think that's very suitable to the time we have right now, so.
Madam Chair, actually, just something real quick under new and unfinished business?
Yes, please.
Just because we are, I think, all getting a lot of emails from residents. I believe it's like a form email that gets sent out. They attach their name to it regarding the potential of an unconstitutional change of government. And I know that the short answer is that we are not in any kind of violation of the Constitution as far as the power constituted. But I just wanted to know with the Civil Division, if there is going to be any kind of opinion released that would be able to be made public, so that these residents who have this great concern can be appeased. You can take a look at that and submit it to you all, and if you decide to make it public, you can.
John, that's the JOT form that you had sent something out that said it's spam?
Yeah, we will, we'll happy to supply a legal opinion for consideration for the board to be able to submit out to the public. Yeah, I just, I know I received about 17 last week, 40 the week before. So many are coming in, it's like.
I've had over 400.
Don't respond to them. You just make it worse.
Okay, we have under new and unfinished business?
Committee updates.
Okay, committee updates. We are, Ms. Gums is first.
So I, as you know, annually go to conferences for the National Association of Counties. I am asking for permission to do so again for the Legislative Conference in February. I need to book those right now, so there's no objection. I will be attending that conference this February. Additionally, I would like to highlight, I think Jake actually left, but the National Association of County officials website, I did submit our photograph of our lovely building highlighted in green. And it was presented on their social media pages, so that was excellent. It's very nice. And that's all I got. And the governor hasn't signed anything yet.
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to remind everybody once again that on December 10 at noon, we will be having a committee of the whole to discuss putting a solar field on the Fabian Parkway property. We will have our broker doing a opinion of value. We will be talking about the pros and cons, and especially the business case of putting solar there. So please come. Thanks.
A question, the broker, is that an opinion of value? Are you talking about the value of the estate or the value of the solar field?
Of the property.
Okay, okay, okay. Yeah.
All right, very good, yes.
Madam Chair, thank you. And just piggybacking on Ms. Gums, I would like to let everybody know that August, on August 1, 2025, I was also appointed by the President of the National Association of Counties to serve on two committees. The first one is an Advisory Committee on Immigration and International Affairs. And the second one was, is the Large Urban County Caucus Committee. So I have been serving on both committees since August. I did attend a symposium in Milwaukee last month for the Large Urban Caucus Committee. It was a great meeting, got to meet a lot of people from all over the country. And then I monthly participate in the Advisory Council for Immigration and International Affairs, and that meets monthly via Zoom. I will also be attending and requesting to be able to pay for the registration from the county. I'm looking at my finances, and I think I'll be able to cover the rest of it. I did stay in Milwaukee and did drive there. I did cover those costs. But I will be looking at the registration for both the Legislative and then the full NACO Conference in July, which is going to take place in New Orleans. And I think I'll be requesting the registration fee based on our budget. I think I'll be able to cover the cost for the rest. But I did want to let everybody know that I was also appointed to NACO.
Good, very, very good. So for, I would request, because of budgeting concerns being what they are, that two members present what they estimate the costs were, just so we know to move forward, what we're looking at for budgeting. Okay, that would be much appreciated.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Admin Committee?
Yes.
We will be shortly, within the month, hopefully, opening up the new Elgin Building for the Health Department and the Clerk's Office, so look forward in December, maybe sometime for a soft opening of the building for those purposes.
Fantastic.
And I did mention that my mom was a proud supporter of the DAR. I'm sorry, the gals left here. She wrote a poem, and I don't have the date on it, but I did pull it off my computer here. And it won a regional award and then the national award for poetry for the DAR. She was a proud member of it. And since you're led with poetry, a short poem here. "When my sons were little boys, I often made them paper toys. I made them planes cut from the news, and carefully each one would choose. The one he knew would take him far, perhaps out to some distant star. And there were times when I would say, 'Please don't bother me today.'" "Today, they don't bother me. They've gone away and left me free, and now the planes they fly are real, not made of paper but of steel. I cannot join them in their quest of what life offers that is best. So with longing, I recall the joys of paper planes and little boys." That was when my brother left to go into the Navy and ply P3s up the coast.
It's a lovely poem. Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Kias. That's very lovely. All right, is there anything else? Seeing none, Madam, Mr. Roth?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?